Waiting.
Not rolling. Now we're rolling.
Alrighty. Alrighty. I will call the Faulkirk County School Board meeting to order and Ms. Wolf, would you lead? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Jessie's gonna lead us.
Jessie.
Alright. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Cullen, please take the roll and...
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Motion and a second that the school board approve the agenda as written. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, and the motion carries. We move to announcements, and the very first one is not right. The Finance Committee will not be meeting on Wednesday.
Right, exactly.
No. And it will be at a time to be determined.
Next.
Okay. There will be a Personnel Committee meeting on Thursday, we believe, at 8:00 a.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. The Mountain Vista School Governing Board meeting will be Thursday, July 18th, at 8:00 a.m. in the Warren County School Board Office. Chairman's night will be Monday, July 22nd, at 5:00 p.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. There will be a School Board work session Monday, July 22nd, at 6:00 p.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. There will be a Building Committee meeting Thursday, July 25th, at 9:30 a.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. The new teacher dinner is August 12th, so the regular school board meeting scheduled for August 12th will be merged with the work session on August 26th at 6:00 p.m. and will be, excuse me, in the School Administration Conference Room. And I believe that's all of them. And I do not believe that there is a response to Citizens Time, and we move right into Citizens Time. Community involvement is an important component of a successful school division, and the school board welcomes public input. Please be respectful of all speakers and limit your comments to three minutes. Matters relating to personnel or personnel issues cannot be discussed. And we have one name on the list, Lenny Bush, and I do not believe she is here, so we will move right to reports. And we will go with, who shall we start with? I think I've started over there.
Any more?
I'll start over here.
Well, any of the committees that I am on did not need this one. I had an opportunity to review all of the other reports, and I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Ms. Wolf.
I don't have anything to report, just to note in the Finance Committee meeting minutes that four schools, I think, decreased their lunch lines to serving lines from one, from two to one, in order to decrease costs and save us some positions. So, that was good, just so to make sure you guys knew that.
Yep. Thank you. Alrighty, Mr. Bland.
If I may, give a readout on the Building Committee report. As you know, construction on the Performing Arts Center is well underway, and the renovation of the existing 500 Admin and 700 Biology Wings has commenced. Now, if I say anything out of the norm, you'll throw something at me, okay? This is at Faulkirk High School. Also getting underway is the converting of the 1979 100-200 Wing to a separate building and a renovation of the 300 Wing. Other work taking place over the summer at Faulkirk High School is the connecting of the building addition to the pre-existing building. Old to the new. A chiller replacement at the annex, refurbishing of the gym floor, and the stage floor is also to be refinished, and a wheelchair lift is to be installed. Beds have been received and are being reviewed for the audiovisual system in the Falcon Room. Correct? VMDO Architects will submit documentation to the U.S. Green Building Council this month to obtain a LEED Gold Certification. VMDO is confident that a LEED Gold Certification will be rewarded. One other item involving Faulkirk High School, the Building Committee is reviewing requests by NVP Incorporated and also buildings, well, and also Townsend and Schools Engineering for a construction grading easement and a transportation right-of-way easement just past Faulkirk High School on Waterloo Road at the old Cauke property. Okay? That's being reviewed. Other items of interest happening this summer, or over the summer, include a chiller replacement at Grace Miller, a water storage tank replacement at Marshall Middle School and Coleman. This is just one tank, one big tank services both schools, okay? There's also another water storage tank replacement at the Southeastern Alternative School. We're doing a complete lighting retrofit at Coleman. Completion of the elementary school security systems is now underway, so hopefully at the beginning of the 2013-2014 season or school year, that will be complete. Repairs to the tennis court at Kettle Run High School is, have we done that yet, or is it?
I don't know.
Okay.
That'd be great.
There were some cracks in the asphalt on the tennis court, so we're ready to take care of those.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. That's it from the Building Committee perspective, but I also passed out to you a calendar of upcoming events at Mountain Vista Governor's School as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gord.
The School Health Advisory Board Committee is reviewing a letter of recommendation to bring a group called Girls on the Run to Faulkirk County. Pilot program, which would be sort of a running slash mentorship program, and I'm really excited to see that that pilot program gets started here, so.
That's a great program.
We're all very excited to see.
Is this long-distance running, or, I mean, includes sprints and everything?
It's mostly long-distance running, but it also includes almost a mentorship
Oh, yeah.
of women who are involved in exercise and running, partnering with girls in schools before school mostly, and then they have sort of other extracurricular activities that they do involving running. But I think that that's one more way to get more exercise with our, you know, for our students, particularly those in elementary schools, so. Looking forward to seeing that go forward.
But to add to that, the group is looking to ask the school board to sign a letter of support for that program, but the Health Advisory is working on the letter, so that will come before us at some point.
Okay. Okay, is that it for you?
Yep.
Okay, I will add one thing to Duke's report regarding Faulkirk High School, because this may be of interest to some of y'all. We heard a lot of talk from the band folks at Faulkirk about instrument storage.
Oh.
And as of today, the storage...
It is on order.
It is on order. We found some money. To take care of the instrument storage, so that has been ordered and should be in...
We expect installing in September, it'll be after school starts.
Okay.
Okay. And as far as Personnel Committee goes, we had just a couple of items, and we'll be talking about them later with Danelle, so. Your turn.
Just a couple of things coming up. Tomorrow is the first, evening at 4:30, at Warrington, it's the first Superintendent's Forum, and there'll be three following that. And we try to stagger the times to make it, and locations to make it as accessible as possible for stakeholders to attend. And also, just, we started planning for our Administrator Retreat, Administrator Academy, July 22nd, 23rd. That'll be at Ritchie Elementary School, and that theme will be similar to the theme of the Superintendent's Forum, which is, alright, where do we go from here? And what's next for Faulkirk County Public Schools? And just wanted to again mention, new teachers will be here August 8th, got to meet with a few of them today at their orientation, that's always an exciting time. You can always tell the new teacher orientation, because you pull into the parking lot, and it's all new, you know, it's nice, new cars, little cars, convertibles, you know, two-seaters. So that was exciting, being able to do that, looking forward to the dinner, appreciate the board's flexibility on that meeting on the 12th, so we can attend that dinner with the new folks, very exciting.
And for your forums, if they can't make one, they can certainly go to one of the others. It's not like if you go to Warrington, you have to go to the Warrington Forum.
Right, and additionally, we will post the actual presentation, and Mr. Ritchie is gonna record it for us, tape it for us.
Rankin.
Rankin, sorry.
Yep.
He'll record it and it'll be available, it'll be not streamed, but it'll be available probably through YouTube on the website.
Each one of them?
That's great.
No, I think, I think we should do one.
Oh, okay.
Do the best one.
The last one.
Pressure, pick the best one.
No, that's great.
Looking forward to that.
That's great.
Okay.
Good idea.
Then we move to Financial Report, Ms. Kotoff.
You have before you the May 31st Financial Report. It was presented to the School Board Finance Committee at its June meeting. We, the next two weeks will be processing, or I say we, payroll will be processing through HR, the accruals on the pay for the 10-, 11-month employees. So we will, that's one of the reasons to postpone the Finance Meeting, we'll have a better feel of what our year is gonna look like after that. We have begun fiscal year 14, and the adopted budget is online, and you should have all received hard copies as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions?
Questions to anybody? Nope. Thank you. Okay, Human Resources, Ms. Downs.
Good evening. I'm gonna start this evening by the list of certified vacancies that we have. First, I was gonna do a comparison. Last year at this time, we had 87 certified resignations. This year, we have 92 at this point, so only slightly above, I think I was predicting a little higher, but right now, not very much higher. From the list you see this evening, we only have 20 of those positions left vacant, so we are working hard to fill the jobs. I mean, my goal is always mid-July, so hopefully we'll be able to have that number whittled down.
I think I figured out why I was concerned, is because I don't think we ever got all those emails before.
I don't think you did either, but you're probably the best voice to spread the word, so we're gonna keep pushing the needle.
No, that's great.
No, that's fine.
The second is the classified vacancies list. This year, this time last year, we had 100 classified vacancies, and currently, we have 93, so we're actually down from this time last year for classified, and we have 14 vacancies. This Wednesday, we have a Transportation School Nutrition Hiring Fair, and we hope to be able to fill the outstanding bus driver, bus aides, and school nutrition positions we have. Currently, we have 18 people pre-registered, which means they've done all their pre-employment, which means reference checks, DMV check, as well as background check, ready to come to the fair. The fair is at Liberty High School, and I believe it's, I'm gonna say 1 to 6, I always get that wrong, but it's either 2 to 6 or 1 to 6 this Wednesday. Any questions from HR?
Can I just ask you one question? The fair, it's a Transportation School Nutrition Job Fair, but we don't have any school nutrition jobs?
Currently, we have removed that from the vacancy list, because we had some reassignment of staff due to changing the line sizes, so we had about 14 vacancies and seven people we had to move around. So what we decided to do is to hire substitutes and then try from there to fill permanent positions, but yes, we do still have positions, so that's kind of misleading. Any other questions?
No, that's great.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, we move to Consent Agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approved the following. Minutes of the April 8th School Board Meeting.
June 10th, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
My fault, June 10th.
It shouldn't be.
I revoked this.
Mine's not on here.
Just June 10th.
June the 10th?
Yes, sir.
Minutes of the June the 10th School Board Meeting and the April the 15th?
No. No, we've already done all of them. It's just the June 10th.
Where is it on mine?
It's not. She didn't catch it until too late.
And the June Special School Board Meeting and Work Session. And what is the next statement?
The rest of them. Payment of bills.
Approve of the Minutes. Monthly bills and payroll, the personnel actions to help textbook adoption, community relations policies, Article 4, Division of Policy 3-3/13 defines the fees, revision of Policy 3-3.5, purchasing, and religious exemption 070813.1.
Second. Motion and a second. That the school board approve the minutes of the June 10th School Board Meeting, the payment of bills, personnel actions, health textbook adoption, community relations policies, Article 4, facilities, revision of Policy 3-3.13, fines and fees, revision of Policy 3-3.5, purchasing, and religious exemption 070813.1. Any discussion?
No.
If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, and the motion carries, and we move to information items, and the first one is Dr. Jex.
There are three policy updates related to bylaws. 1-5.1, Virginia law no longer requires establishment of school health or gifted education advisory boards. The second one I thought was very interesting, because I didn't know this, I didn't know that this wasn't a requirement. 1-5.4 requires public access to school board regulations as well as school board policies. So heretofore, I guess they were not, we were not required to post them, but I can imagine the school board not, but that is now law. And the third, 1-6.1, two pieces related to regular school board meetings. The two parts to this allow school board members to attend a closed meeting held by any committee or subcommittee of the school board, and also, second, also Part 2 permits a school board member to participate in a, from a remote location, I guess Skype, or something similar to Skype, if he or she is unable to attend the meeting due to a personal matter.
Yeah, and that is a change, because, yeah.
That's so much better. Are you kidding? Well, do you have somewhere you have to, you know what I'm saying, sometimes you have appointment that sometimes contradicts you than attend by Skype. So, that's huge.
So those are the three updates.
Okay. Any other discussion, anybody? Okay.
Madam Chairman, do you want to put this on the consent agenda or move it to the works?
Well, do we want to put it on consent? I just had a couple of questions, so, I mean, I mean, you're not gonna ask them now, but I didn't, I didn't wanna just wait till the work session. Here, wait, which ones are we here? You're asking me to know what I'm doing.
Oh, well, we can wait.
Bylaws, here we go. Okay, hold on, let me bring it up. Oh, I just, I just wanted to make sure on the gifted and talented education that we still have the, what's it called, page? Dr. Mitchell, is it page?
We also have the advisory board, we, even though we, it's no longer required, we have, the way that the policy that's gonna be an instruction to all the states says may, we may have one, and we've opted to have one.
Right. And also, the Health Advisory, I don't see the...
Page is not a part of the board, that is a separate advocacy.
Right. Right. But I just wanted to iterate that, that we, reiterate that we are keeping these groups, it's not like we're letting them go. And then, hold on. Regulations, here we go. Wait, let me make sure. When it says that we, our policies and the regulations are available to citizens who do not have access online, where is that gonna be?
Well, they're currently, they're currently on the webpage.
They follow, in our new reconstruction, the policy and the regulations follow the policy. You're reading the policy, and then you read the regulation, and you can see the forms.
Right.
It's always been current practice.
Online, oh, I know, online, but this says that the policies and regulations are available to citizens who do not have access, online access.
That is, that is if they ask, if they ask for it, we always provide it to them.
So if someone, so that means that there's not gonna be some big, because this thing would be huge.
No.
So there won't be any book anywhere, it's just that if someone asks for it, we'll...
Specific policy.
Okay.
Reprovide them.
That's all I wanted to know. Now, let me see one more, hold on. Sorry about this. D4, D5. And that's, I think that's it. Yeah, that's all I had, that was it.
Anybody? Alright, so is everybody happy with consent?
I'm good on consent, yes.
Okay.
If she's got her questions answered to her satisfaction, then I'll say move to consent.
Okay.
If nobody else has anything.
I think that's, that's everybody. Okay. And next, we move to, who's doing this one? Mr. Finn. Revisions to Section 2, Community Relations.
Good evening. I'm standing in for Janice this evening, she's on her way to a school safety training.
Oh, okay.
In Lynchburg, and since we kind of share some of these policies, and I was co-sponsor, I just told her I'd take care of this this evening. The school board were asking that you review updated policies from Section 2, Community Relations, and Section 4, Support Services and Facilities, and consider these policy revisions for adoption in August, which would be the later August date.
And that's okay, right?
Yes, we'll have a chance to address any questions at the late July work session. But specifically, the revisions are the Safety of School Facilities, 4-2.1, and 4-2.2, Emergencies Preparedness and Response Plans. Under that policy, there's a new code section that requires adoption of threat assessment teams, and I can speak to that or address any questions that have been through it, as you have questions. And the last thing is Policy 2-3.4, Relations with Law Enforcement Authorities, and that ties in with the change in the Emergency Preparedness Policy, and it's about providing, were noticed in, by code, from law enforcement on certain juvenile crimes, and that information is given to principals, and in that revision in the policy, it's saying that principals have the authority to share that information with threat assessment teams. But you'll see that broken down. So anyway, you know, just look through it, I certainly can address any questions on emergency preparedness or relations with law enforcement, and then Janice could answer any questions on the facilities. Okay?
Okay.
Alright, so we're okay to adopt in August, correct? And that will go on consent? And you'll do that on consent agenda? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty. Section 3, Business, that'd be Ms. Kotoff.
Yes, you have before you a legislative adjustment to reporting per pupil cost. The Code of Virginia was amended to take some of the mandates that are placed on local school boards, and what they looked at was the requirement to distribute to every parent the per pupil cost. Now, the language reflects it in the policy, but it is our intent to continue. We do send an e-notify when it's on our web, we do place it on our web, and we do send it out to the parents as part of the Superintendent's Annual Report, so we'll continue to do that, but we're no longer required, based on the code, to send it out to every household.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman, this is the school board, we should put this on the August consent agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
Everybody?
I'm fine with that, that's fine.
Okay. Yep. Next, we have Section 5, Personnel Policies.
Good evening. In front of you this evening are three sections of the personnel. First one is 5-1.5, which is confidentiality of files. What's been added is a paragraph which provides confidentiality to teacher performance indicators with following exceptions, of course, court order, grievance proceedings, or otherwise required by state law. The second is 5-2.8, Assignment and Transfer, and what this is saying, it adds the language that if a principal or supervisor is transferred from position, that we would consider performance evaluations as part of that transfer, so that's a change. And finally, 5-3.7, Reduction in Force, and that's adding specific language that reduction shall not be made based solely on seniority, but also performance evaluations will be considered. That's, I guess, proposed for August.
Okay.
Any questions?
No. No. Thank you. Alrighty.
No questions, so consent agenda.
I'm fine with consent.
Yeah, I'm fine with those.
I'm just glad to see that 5.37 in there.
Yeah.
Finally.
Dr. Mitchell? We're like musical chairs in the night.
Yes, good afternoon, or good evening. The Charter Schools policy appears in the Instructional Section of the policy book, and this change is legislative only. It essentially says that if a charter school application is submitted by a local school board, and there are local school boards that do that around Virginia, rather than submitted by an individual or a group, that that board does not have to submit the application to the Virginia Board of Education, individuals do, but not school boards.
Not the board itself.
So that's all this is saying.
Okay. That alright with everybody?
That's good.
Consent?
Yep. Okay.
That one's good.
Okay. And we are back to Mr. Finn. Student Policies.
It's been such a long time. If you recall, back in June, June 10th specifically, we addressed revisions to the Code of Student Conduct at that time, and we presented that, and then we discussed those changes, primarily the provision for Bring Your Own Device revisions, as well as the addition to adding restorative justice practices or options to the Code of Conduct. Subsequent to that, we received legislative changes that also impact the Code of Conduct policy, and the two key things there are clarifying the definition of bullying, there was a legislative change there that required us to do some changes with that, and also a change in the definition of firearms, which is a multi-code issue. Essentially, there was a list of different devices or weapons, if you will, that were defined under firearms that were extracted from the code section. What was also specific to that same code section is that it called for mandatory expulsion for any of those, quote, firearms at the time. Now that they're pulled out from that code section, they are still prohibited on school property, but they do not require a mandatory recommendation for, under the code. Does not mean that the board cannot choose to still make that a recommendation for expulsion, and that would be my recommendation to the board, that we continue to view it that way, it's just it wouldn't be stipulated as per the code, because we can always review each situation as we do and make an appropriate determination, you know, based on the merits of the particular case. Because in my mind, even though a knife with a blade of longer than three inches is no longer defined as a firearm, it's still dangerous in our schools, and, you know, but that's really up to you. Given, so that's, that's a key thing that I think you need to know about, and I'm going into detail here because we are asking that we bring this to the vote tonight because of the timeline we have on the Code of Conduct.
This one?
Madam Chairman, that, and school board members, that is already an action item, you decided to place it as an action item for the school board session, but Mr. Finn was simply bringing to you the legislative changes that happened after that session.
Right, we had a good plan, and then we had the legislative changes come in to play that kind of threw our plan a little bit off, but I still have the need for the approval of that policy so that we can move forward. It's time-sensitive. So that's an important one. The other thing that impacts, and these are some of our local things that we've already talked about, we changed the guidelines for possession of personal electronic devices. We changed some of the comments based on board feedback from the 25th of June, so that's incorporated into that policy revision. And we deleted some repeated sentences in the policy relative to suspension expulsion and alternative education exclusion, and then in search and seizure, we added personal electronic devices as property that could be part of, you know, probable, or not probable cause, reasonable suspicion and search. So those were the only things that were changed really from the 25th discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
The only thing I was concerned about, or just wanted to have you talk more about, was the change in the regulation or policy that allowed relative attendance in...
Oh, kinship care.
Yeah, I just wanted to hear what you think about that.
Well, you know, it is what it is. Of course, that's in the school admissions policy, which doesn't have the time sensitivity issue, so we can talk about that more later, but, you know, I mean, we... But, you know, I mean, we have been very firm in requiring custodial relationship between custodian and student as a basis for bona fide residency and therefore enrollment, and this really just throws a.
Tics that out.
Yeah, throws it out the window. And the interesting thing is the provision of the act is set to expire on June 30 of 2016, which I don't understand that at all. I'd like to know a little bit more about that myself, as to why you would put this kinship care provision or code in place, and then you would withdraw it in two years.
Is it like a beta test? Are they testing to see whatever?
That's what it would.
Is it redrawn or reviewed?
It says it's set to, provision of act is set to expire June 30, 2016.
Well, if this one is not time-sensitive, that was really the only one that seemed like, oh, my land.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look into that a little bit more myself. I mean, it is code, and we have to do it, but it's concerning because, and Marcy, we spoke about this today, about all the possibilities that could play out. I mean, there's always legitimate scenarios in these kinds of cases where, you know, a parent becomes gravely ill and is unable to care. I mean, there's legitimate cases, but, you know, it also.
It's a good way to prevent a student, a child, from suffering because of something he doesn't have any control over.
Right.
But on the other hand.
It can be misused.
Oh, sure.
It's an easy way for somebody to.
Yeah.
So, I mean, in one respect, it makes sense to go back and revisit, hopefully revisit, and not just dismantle in three years, because it's.
Right. Well, and there's some language in the code section I was looking at today, and, you know, there's a required notarized affidavit is one of the things that, you know, that a school division may ask for, or some sort of certification from the local Department of Social Services. So that I've got to do a little more research on myself, and I'd like to call Jan Selbo at our local DSS, the director, and find out what she understands about it and what their perspective is on whether they would get involved in those kinds of cases to endorse it, because that's really the issue, is the legitimacy of the need to do that. And the other thing we were looking at is whether the, there was a time limit on the kinship care, but it doesn't appear to be, because they talk in the code section about cases that may go beyond a year, which would lead me to believe that there's no view that, I mean, the only deadline would be June 30, 2016, you know, because once a kinship care arrangement is established, there's no provision that says it's time-limited.
Well, and what is kinship care? That's first.
It has to be a relative.
I mean.
That's the requirement. It has to be a relative of the child.
Okay.
So I guess it could be an aunt, uncle, grandparent.
Okay, so any.
How far does that go then?
Yeah, how far does that go? Well, and then the other question is, is there, what you kind of talked about, is there anything we can add on to that requirement?
Right.
Because that's just a very brief statement.
Right.
Maybe we could legally add something on to that requirement.
Right, and I think, I think the real issue, because you can see that there are those cases where there's a legitimate need, and it's just the issue of establishing the legitimacy of the need. And I, and one thing, it is clearly stipulated in the code, is that you can't ask for that to be reviewed annually.
You can.
Yes.
Okay.
So, you know, and that, so we could set something up.
Okay.
So we'll work on that one a little bit.
But that one's.
That one definitely threw me for a loop, too.
I would think there are a lot of questions, just thinking right now, not out loud, that we could take to make sure that the legitimacy is there and follow up. And I can think of like five things right off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, I'm open for input at this point, so anything you want to send my way would be much appreciated.
Right.
Okay. All right.
So this will be discussed at a work session?
That should go in the work session.
Right.
I think that's good.
I think so.
But all the other ones are great.
The other policies, 7-3.2 and 7-3.3, would you like to just move all of those to the work session?
I mean, we can't, are those critical? Weren't we?
No, they're not critical.
They're not.
Then that.
The Code of Conduct, 7.3.1, is the real critical one.
Right.
And that's already on action.
Right. Okay. Yeah, then that'd be, they're a work session.
So we'll talk about these at work session.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Aspirations 2015, Year 3.
Yes. An update was provided on this to the original planning team on June 25, and during this update, each plan champion discussed the actions that had taken place on the plans during Year 3. At the end of Year 3, 58 action plans, or 44 percent, have been championed, with strategic planning complete on all but four that are ongoing into Year 4. So in the seven strategies, at the end of Year 3, we've addressed the following percentages. So of the academic strategy, we've addressed 41 percent of the plans. Of the character, 75 percent of the plans. Of environment, 46 percent of the plans. Of staffing, 39 percent of the plans. Communication, 50 percent of the plans. Resources, 44 percent. And environmental responsibility, 33 percent of the action plans. While we consider the strategic planning complete on 54 action plans, it certainly does not mean that our work is done. These that have been implemented, we'll continue to monitor, review, and adjust as needed. A brief status report is provided to you in the year-end report on each of the action plans that were championed in Year 3. And our website will be updated with this report, as well as the presentation that was given to the original planning team, with a few adjustments. We had really good feedback during that, so we made some minor tweaks. And it shows some of the great work that the champions have done this year and all the years with limited resources. In the fall, we'll bring back to you what we propose or recommend to be plans championed for Year 4. Any questions?
No. I was just, I would just say that I would encourage everybody to go to the website and read, because we have done some phenomenal things.
Oh, that's great.
Lot of successes.
A lot of successes, yeah.
Yes, and so many things that we continue to do have roots back with the strategic plan.
Yes. So, good job, everybody. Yep, thank you. Okay. Then Ms. Downs.
Good evening. The following is a request to increase a, or lengthen the contract for one ESL teacher to full-time and one gifted talented teacher to .7 fifths of a contract. For the ESL teacher, this would mean that we'd be able to provide further services for Liberty Seater Lee and Mary Walter, and that we'd be able to free up so an instructional assistant can assist at Mary Walter. For the gifted and talented, we'd be able to provide additional services for our pathways programs. Both of the ESL funding would come from the Title III funding. The GT funding would come from some teacher moves that we did at Thompson, that we did at Phila Position. Both of, this has gone to the Personnel Committee, and they are in support, and I would ask that we could move this to action this evening if everybody.
Yeah. Well, that's great.
Okay. All righty.
Okay. This next one's a little more complicated.
Yeah.
This evening, we're requesting the addition of one part-time foreign language teacher and one full-time ESL assistant, or two part-time ESL assistants. For the foreign language staffing adjustment, it's requested to give additional teaching hours for Taylor and/or Faukeer High School, depending on need. And for the ESL, it's currently to serve both Bradley and Smith, needs part-time assistance to provide additional supplemental services. The funding has not been identified. However, the administration is requesting authorization of these positions should funding become available. Authorizing these to be posted would help us expedite when we are able to determine exactly where the money is. And I do believe we'll be able to find this through breakage, and we've been able to identify it.
That's right.
But by going ahead and giving us pre-advanced authorization, when we have these needs, we'd be able to go ahead and post and fill the position.
Okay.
And requesting that this move to action.
This is only be pulled off only if funds are identified.
That's correct.
Okay, folks?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe Mr. Darrell is now going to do the FA Just renovation.
Yes. Good evening. This information item concerns provision of the proposed audiovisual system for the Falcon Room at Faukeer High School, and staff is asking that the board consider the information and then move it forward to action. Specifically, we have a proposal before us in the amount of $122,346 for provision of an audiovisual system for the Falcon Room, and that proposal is by Acuity Audiovisual Company. We are asking that the board authorize the chairman to execute a contract in that amount for the system. The background is that the Falcon Room all along has been planned to be used for school events, community and general government events, training, perhaps school board meetings, and other governmental uses, and to be available to the community, as well as a lecture hall and other uses for educational purposes. What the audiovisual system will do will enable us to use the Falcon Room for these purposes by the provision of closed-circuit television system available for recording, microphones, monitors for the people sitting up front to see what they're doing, as well as people in the back to be able to look at the monitors, amplifiers and speakers throughout, an assisted listening system for the hard of hearing, and also it will include wiring that will be run to the distance learning lab in the renovated Faukeer High School Media Center, and then that wiring will enable the distance learning lab to be used as an overflow area, so people there could listen and watch what's going on in the Falcon Room. We engaged Polysonics Corporation to design the system. They designed a system for us. We put it out for bid. We got four bids, and as you've seen in the bid tabulation that was included in your information, the bids ranged, the low bid was by Acuity at $122,000 and some dollars. The high bid was at $148,000 and some dollars. We had four bids in that range. Staff and Polysonics consultants has reviewed the proposal from Acuity, has found the proposal to be responsive to the, to the design, to the request invitation for bids, so we are asking that the board move this item forward to action this evening.
That's considerable, less than what I thought we were going to get it at. And I was thinking about 150, between 150 and 175,000, and for us to come in at 122 for that one.
Yes, sir, which is less than what we have been carrying in the budget. So all the reporting that we've been giving you on the budget situation at Faukeer High School, this has no negative impact upon that.
And we're thinking this is a 10-week lead?
Oh, I think that once, if you approve tonight, we award the contract this week. It will be at least 16 weeks. Any, we have, any provision of a complex system requires time for adjustments and getting it right. So it won't be ready at the start of school.
No, no, absolutely.
You just might want to mention, because I was wrong when I was reading this, because it says that you're, to add the capability of video conferencing, I thought that meant Faukeer High School did not have video conferencing, but they do in their distance learning lab.
Well, they don't have, the distance learning lab, ma'am, is, is set up for addition of video conferencing capability. We put in the wiring, some of the wire, some of the infrastructure for it, but the actual video conferencing system is not yet installed, and that has been planned all along to be provided by our IT department. So that room is ready.
But it's on the works to be implemented.
Well, that would be up to IT. We, in construction, we outfitted the room with some of the required infrastructure, and now it's in the hands of IT if they're going to install video conferencing in the distance learning lab.
Well, my question is, it may be video conferencing, distance learning, maybe I'm confusing it all, but at Kettle Run High School, they have their lab there where the room, where you can have a class at Kettle Run, and you can video conference it over to Lord Fairfax, or vice versa.
Yes.
That's the capability that I'm talking about.
That's the capability that has been discussed all along, and also conferencing between the high schools.
Right.
So the class given to any high school could be shared with the other high schools.
That's what I was.
But that equipment is not yet installed at Faukeer, and is not part of this proposal. This proposal would be for the Falcon Room, and the, the video teleconferencing that we're talking about for the distance learning lab would be when the IT department, it's really in their hands now.
But it's in the budget. Is that right?
Yeah.
It's in the budget to have that ability at Faukeer High.
It's not in the construction budget. That would be a question you'd have to address to Mr. McDonald.
Okay. All right. Well, then maybe I'm confusing. I thought that part of the.
He says, no, it's not in there.
It's not in there. So at the end of all this, Faukeer High School will not have the capability to do those classes. Is that right? That they will not have it? Okay.
Right. To my knowledge, that is correct.
That would be one of those issues that we'll deal with, with contingency.
Okay.
See.
Okay. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you know how much that costs, something like that? I mean, what kind of money are we talking about to get that ability there?
We put Mr. McDonald on the spot.
I mean, I don't want to. Or maybe work session. Should we put it on work session?
I'll go behind the column.
I don't, I do not know the specific requirements for what is necessary to do.
Okay, so we could talk about that later.
I've had to broaden that discussion.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Yeah, question, two questions about the construction on this room. The video monitors for the audience, are there going to be a pair facing the audience?
There'll be one facing the audience, which you're really not going to need, but for people sitting in the back, that will be, you know, will give them something to look at, help them read what's being presented. And then there will be one facing back to, for instance, if you, where the people sitting up front, perhaps the board could watch.
Right, so there's, okay, there's one facing each way.
Right, so the people presenting can see exactly what the audience is seeing.
Great. That's, that's all, I just want to know how many of them there were, because.
Yes, sir.
To get four, I, I read this, and I was thinking there's four, two front, two back, and that seemed to overkill in that room.
That would, yes, sir. One front, one. One for the people sitting up front, back to them, and there's also speakers for them so they could, you know, hear themselves, and then one out for the audience.
And this, but this does include the touchscreen controller for the.
Yes, it does.
Okay. And software.
Yes, it does. A complete working system.
Perfect.
Okay. Great. All righty. Then I will entertain a motion.
Well, let me get to the motion. Okay. I move that the school board move action items number, is that where we are?
Information.
Information items number 11H, I, and J to action items number 12B, C, and D for consideration for approval this evening.
Second.
Motion and a second that the school board move information items 11H, I, and J to action items 12B, C, and D for consideration for approval this evening. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no, and the motion carries, and we move to action items.
I heard, um, was she going with it?
Well, I'm just trying to remember. Is this what we're doing? Oh, okay. I move that the revision to policy, is this it, right here? This is it? Revision to policy 7-3.1 Code of Conduct, Student Conduct, and Regulation 7-3.1, parentheses, see guidelines for possession of personal electronic devices on school property. Wait, you know what? I read the wrong thing. Sorry.
And, and Ms. Will.
You want me to reread that, since I missed it?
You don't need to approve the regulation because this regulation.
Well, I, let me, let me strike that. Let me try again. I move, this is a lot simpler. I move that the school board adopt the revisions to policy 7-3.1 Code of Student Conduct.
Second. There you go.
There you go.
Motion and a second that the school board adopt the revisions to policy 7-3.1 Code of Student Conduct. Any discussion?
This, this is, we've gotten a couple emails about this, and I just wanted to say that I, I support this, that we give it a shot and see what happens. Dr. Jack says that they did it in Green County, and it was really, really seamless, not that Dr. Jack says that they did it in Green County, and it was really, really seamless, not that major of a deal. I'm, I support it, because I believe the, giving the, leaving the principals with discretion to modify, you know, regulate the use of those devices at their schools as they see fit is very important. But I believe that we need to give students the opportunity to use these devices instructionally, and that not doing it would be more of a hindrance, so...
And I'll add to that, that we, I think we would all agree that we know, going into this, that we don't have all the answers to this, that we will, as we go through it, there will be problems that arise, and that things that we're going to have to address, but we understand that going in. But I believe to not act and give them the opportunity is like sticking your head in the sand, because technology is here, and we can't pretend that it's not.
Well, it's a very fluid process. Like I said, we're giving them the opportunity to explore this, and then to make good use of it. And if we have to go back and make revisions, or subtractions, or whatever the case may be, we will revisit it.
Yeah.
I think it's not a case of if, it's when.
Yeah.
And we will, and every division that goes through this goes through consistent revisions and tweaking.
Right.
And looks at it throughout the year, so...
Okay.
Just in an effort to have consistency from elementary to middle to high school, one of the things we're planning for the administrative academy is to have them meet at level groups as principals to talk about consistency in each level. So, while there's discretion, come together as principals and decide, elementary, how, where's our common base? You know, how are we going to do this with some degree of consistency, and do that at middle and high school as well? And then we're going to review that at different points of the year with the same groups and that forum as principals, to see how it's going to talk about what's working, what's not working.
Okay.
But everyone having a device, is it going to slow down the service?
That was one of the concerns we had initially, but I think they looked at it.
Go ahead, Mr. McDonald.
Don't try and...
Yes.
The question about will we slow down? We are able to carve out a portion of our bandwidth just for the wireless devices, so we can limit the percentage of which we allocate to wireless. The difficulty we're going to run into is the ability to connect to the wireless may be greater impacted by the number of access points that you're allowed to have. The designs of the schools for wireless access were not with the intent that potentially every student would connect to our network.
Right.
So, a access point can hold potentially 30 devices at one time. That's what you usually use as a measurement. And if you look at some of the school designs, there may be five classrooms that are around one access point. So, the difficulty will be the ability for students to connect to a wireless network on a regular basis. We've already experienced this at Kettle Run, where we run out of the ability for people to connect to the wireless, and that's without an approved BYOD practice.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the motion carries, and we move to the contract extension.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approve a contract extension for one ESL teacher to full-time status, and one GT teacher to a three-quarter or 0.75 contract status.
Second. Motion and a second that the school board approve a contract extension for one ESL teacher to a full-time status, and one GT teacher to a three-quarter time contract status. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And that motion carries, and we move to the next one.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approve the addition of one part-time foreign language teacher and one full-time ESL assistant, or two full, or two part-time ESL assistants.
Second. Motion and a second that the school board approve the addition of one part-time foreign language teacher and one full-time ESL assistant, or two part-time ESL assistants. Any discussion?
I just want to clarify that this is pending. Of course, we are able to find the funding for these positions.
Yeah. Okay. Any other? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the motion carries, and we move to the Falcon Room. Audiovisual.
I move that the school board authorize the chairman to execute a contract to purchase an audiovisual system for the new Falkir High School Falcon Room from Acuity Audiovisual Company in the amount of 122,346 dollars and 67 cents.
Second. Motion and a second that the school board authorize the chairman to execute a contract to purchase an audiovisual, audiovisual system for the new Falkir High School Falcon Room from Acuity Audiovisual Company in the amount of 122,346 dollars and 67 cents. Any discussion?
I just want to say, I think that, you know, looking at market rates for type of AV integration, purchase of services, and the forward thinking of pre-wiring so much, this is one of, this is a really good deal.
It's a bargain.